Good evening. Today is January 29, 2025. I want to go ahead and, well, let me do our thoughtful today. Our thoughtful today is be at war with your vices, at peace with your neighbors, and let every new year find you a better person. That's Benjamin Franklin. I'm going to go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I'm going to ask Commissioner Mason, if you would, please lead us in our invocation, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Long, if you would lead us in our pledge, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let us bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us back to this place one more time. We thank you for all that you've done for this community and all that you are about to do. We ask that as we move forward in doing the county business, that you would allow your spirit to flow through this board, to be able to make the best decisions, to enhance the quality of lives of this community. We ask that you continue to bring love, unity, peace as we continue to do all that you have called us to do. God, to continue to elevate and take this county to the next level. We ask that you give us sound wisdom, sound judgment. Give us a sound mind to be able to make even the tough decisions that it takes to be able to move this county to the next level. We thank you. We'll be forever grateful and thankful, and we give you all the kingdom honor and the glory. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for that. Guys, I seek a motion that we adopt the agenda, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5-0. Thank you so much. Next is citizens' comments. This opportunity, we will let citizens make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. You may comment this time, please. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Dennis Taylor. My wife and I have a house in District 1 and one in District 5. We were in District 3 for 45 years. So I got allegiance to District 3. What I want to talk on tonight is the SPOSS in District 3, number 9. And I'll talk to the chair per rule.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Actions are better than words. SPOSS and sale tax referendum. The projects are supposed to be built in a timely fashion. That's the law. And I'm concerned that we're working toward not being able to pass future SPOSS in this county. It's the very best way to tax. It's the most fair way when done right. It takes burden off the property owners and spreads it out. We're in danger of SPOSS failing. It failed several times in the past elections. It's failing for three reasons. It's not sold right. Governments are automatically thinking it's going to pass, and they don't work on selling it. Two, the climate we're in now. With all the high assessments, high inflation, high food prices, high interest on borrowing, it's turning people away from sales tax. We cannot afford to lose a SPOSS in Newton County. And that's the reason I beg you to go ahead and get these projects going. It's been too long. The jail project, held up, the old jail projects. I think it's imperative. We need a taste SPOSS in this county, bad, to help with infrastructure in ways other than filling potholes. I just come through 212 and 36. You risk your life getting through that intersection. That's the state, and I understand that. But we've got deals in the county that need to be done. I could sell it. I could sell it right now. You sell it in a way that it takes the burden off property owners and small business owners. Y'all help the big businesses by giving them abatements. We need some help. And with this, and I can't comment on it because it's not on the agenda, but other deal going on, we're in real danger of losing SPOSS. We can't afford it. I hope y'all work on it. We can get these projects going. Law says we have to, or either y'all deem them no longer feasible. And he'll tell you, it's not going to hold up in court. They've got to be done. So I beg you, get them going. And my love for District 3 is the reason I'm up here and asked you to get going. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Thanks. Chairman's report. I don't have anything to report tonight. Mr. County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can we pull it up? So today's county manager's report, we're going to focus on the first P, our people. And we're going to talk about the winter storm, in particular, January 10. And then we're going to also talk about the January 21 storm as well. Let's start with January 10. In preparation for that storm, preparations was made as early as January 8. And our EMA department hosted a jurisdiction virtual briefing facilitated by the National Weather Service. And the following jurisdictions participated. City of Portidale, City of Oxford, Newton County Schools, City of Covington, Newton County Sheriff's Office, Newton County Department Staff. This kind of collaboration shows that working together works. Let's talk about the fine efforts of Public Works. During this winter storm, 75 tons of sand and salt mixture were prepared for our roads. 35 pounds of calcium chloride was used by Public Works to pretreat over 105 miles of road within Newton County. 97 calls were addressed across all five districts. And those calls include anything from ice on the roads, the scraping of the roads, downed trees, and blocked roads. Here's a snapshot of the call alert. And while you can look at the number log, the number log will only show 77 calls. However, 20 of the calls were duplicates. So in total, we had 97 calls throughout the county during this first winter storm. In terms of getting the information out, our public information office used our social media platforms to get the word out to our residents of this community. Through Facebook, we had over 216,000 views. We touched 74 people through this platform. In reference to Instagram, we had over 4,000 views, and we touched nearly 2,700 people through this platform. Here is some of the snow during the January 10, January 11 winter storm. We were pretty covered. Fast forward to the most recent storm, January 21. Bit short notice because we were coming off of the Martin Luther King holiday. And while we had a short timeframe to work, EMA again stepped up and did what they had to do in terms of attending and hosting a jurisdiction meeting in reference to the National Weather Service Bureau. And based on the information that was shared there, we wanted to err on the side of safety. And in the best interest of the county, employees, and public safety on the whole, we closed at 2:00 PM that day and remained closed for nonessential operations through Wednesday of January 22. We knew that this storm was going to come. And again, Public Works, being the superstars that they are, they stepped up. They treated 270 miles of road with 72 gallons of prime and 8,600 pounds of calcium chloride. Crews began working as early as 3:30 that morning in preparation for the anticipated weather. Public Works fulfilled 157 calls during this snowstorm. And this is in addition to what I stated previously, the 97 calls during January 10 storm. In terms of our public information office outreach, we reached 137,000 people via views, via Facebook. We had 72 people we know that we touched through our Facebook and Instagrams combined. These platforms allowed us to connect quickly to our community stakeholders. Again, special thanks to the various departments, emergency management, Public Works, Newton County Fire Services, Newton County Animal Service, our public information office, building services, water resources, solid waste, finance, and our sheriff's office. This concludes my report. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. I want to ask you, and it wasn't included, but we had talked about it, I think, in November. It was a, excuse me, it was a meeting between you, the county manager, Lanier Sims, the interim chairman, Ms. Maddie, and Ms. Delmonstall. We met at Nelson Heights. And the topic, when we talked there was, when was it supposed to be open? And during the conversation, we all agreed that it would be open by the first part of the year. And it's my understanding that, that I got from the interim chairman, that the RSPs were supposed to have been sent to the Board of Commissioners, I think, this month or next month. And it was supposed to be a communication between the district commissioner and myself and the county managers for when we would get it all together and make sure the board would get it. But it was assured that it would be opened back up similar to or the same as as Spring Hill Park, which is also in District 4. And so I just want to know, where are we at?
Sure. September 5, we met with you in reference to Nelson Heights, again with Ms. Maddie and Ms. Delmonstall. September 12, we provided you the scope of work at the R.L. Cousins Building. You took that scope of work. And then on October 10, you provided feedback in reference to Chromebooks and a splash pad. You had some more prepared memo on your behalf. And the clerk received that memo, as well as the interim chair, as well as our facility maintenance director, Mr. Jason Johnson. So since then, we had our request approval of the task order, which came before this board on November 5, in which the motion passed 5-0. November 13, the Nelson Heights Bill Design Proposal Pre-Conference occurred at Nelson Heights. November 22, the Nelson Heights Proposal Review occurred, and Sun Belt received the highest score for the scores. On January 7, 2025, the request went before the board to approve Sun Belt design to build out the Nelson Heights Community Center, the renovation. And that measure passed also 5-0 as a part of the consent agenda. So we're starting the renovations currently as we speak.
Last two questions. So when's the estimated time that we will be completed?
I can have you an update on that during the February 4 meeting, sir.
Last question. During the meeting at Nelson Heights, when we met interim myself and yourself and others, I think we all got together and we said that we want to make sure that whatever the next step was for Nelson Heights or for R.L. Cousins, that the district commissioner was supposed to be involved in it to his will, so that he would be able to inform his constituents that step by step that it would take to bring that facility back where it needs to be at for facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next on the agenda is unfinished business. Resolution R. 20324.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, would it be appropriate to make a substitute motion at this time? Or we'll wait till a motion is second on this resolution?
You can make a motion.
At this time, I'd like to make a substitute motion?
No, you can make a motion.
Okay, a motion.
Yeah, make a motion, uh-huh.
Okay. Resolution, a motion to approve R. 120324, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia Regarding Implementation of Projects Planned for Districts 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, Newton County, Georgia. I'll reserve my comments for if there's a second. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You made a motion to approve this? Oh, okay.
You can certainly, the resolution before you can be considered and can be modified. I would ask, you have read out a title to modify it. If the motion is seconded, we need to discuss what that resolution will actually read. So it's, there's nothing improper about the motion is made.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'd suggest, go ahead and second the motion, have discussion, and then vote on it when it's first.
Is there a second?
So I'll second for point of discussion.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Discussion, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yes, sir.
I believe we all got an email this week from Jeff Prime, maybe late last week, outlining the ongoing projects in each district, right? So at a high level, those are the projects I'm speaking of. Mr. Taylor was correct. We would hate to see our confidence, the confidence in our citizens wane on our SPOSS. They've been too good to us. And to apply those to the projects as they were teed up in that email this week by Jeff Prime, I think, would be to addressing what Mr. Taylor had actually spoken about.
So let's make sure we get a clear understanding. So is it, my understanding that you want the resolution to read all of the projects?
All of the projects in Districts 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
There's only 2,023 SPOSS.
Well, the current resolution doesn't say that, right? I mean, the current resolution, oh, page 1, okay. I did not look back far enough. Yes, to include that year's SPOSS.
Yeah.
Tell me how I need to word it, Mr. Counselor?
Maybe a more generic resolution. It was a resolution of the Board of Commissioners directing county staff to pursue completion of all SPOSS projects included on the most recent SPOSS ballot, something like that. I mean, that way, you're covering everything.
You want to, would you, would you like to change your motion to that?
I would like to change my motion, amend my motion as stated by the county attorney.
Is there a second now?
I'll second, but you should understand that you're saying that you want not only the entitlement to be changed to insert 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, but in addition to that, you want to be able to put in the body of the resolution all of the SPOSS.
All of the SPOSS projects, yeah.
Correct. That way, it embodies the, I believe, the intent of the current resolution and addresses Mr. Taylor's concerns and pulls into this resolution all of our projects, all the projects across the county relative to that particular SPOSS.
I'll say.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards that we amend his motion to include all of the SPOSS projects. It's seconded by Commissioner Lindsay. Now we are open for discussion. Commissioner Mason was first, and then we come over to you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess, I just wanted to get some clarity. Anytime, and maybe I'm incorrect, but I guess my thought processes was, is whenever you have a SPOSS, it goes to a referendum. The referendum is voted on by the local citizens. And by law, once that referendum passed, any of those projects must be completed. So I guess I'm not aware, or wasn't aware, that a resolution was needed to actually have those projects completed. And the nature of this particular resolution is completely different than, I think, completing those projects that we were all sent on all of the districts. And so my, looking at Robert's Rules of Order, I'm thinking that we have to either approve or deny this resolution. And then if we want a resolution such as the one that we're talking about, then we need to have that complete resolution drafted so that this board can have an opportunity to review what that new draft looks like, and then come back and either approve or deny the secondary resolution. Because it sounds like we're tying another resolution into the current resolution, which the context of the current resolution that's on the agenda is completely different. And so if I could get some clarity.
Yeah, let me, let me address, sorry, my microphone's a little thing. Yeah, let me address it from your sort of first comment forward. You're absolutely right. The SPOSS law requires you to pursue to completion the projects included on the SPOSS ballot. No other resolutions are needed to do that, except those resolutions that you must adopt to actually complete the projects. So with respect to Mr. Edwards' motion, it is largely a symbolic gesture. It is largely just a mere gesture of support and intent to do what we're already obligated to do. With respect to the more technical sort of Robert's Rules of Order, once a resolution is on your agenda, it is subject to be approved, rejected, or modified. So if the board wishes, the resolution as modified could be voted on. It might be better, I might recommend that, just like the resolution in the book, let's reduce this resolution to writing. And so I don't mind saying I've not seen the updated communication from Mr. Prime. But let's reduce that to writing. And then you can consider if the board thinks it's appropriate or necessary to adopt a resolution that says we're going to do what we're already obligated to do. And I understand there's reasons to do that. There's good reason to do that. But I think it might be more effective if that is in writing. And what you're really doing is providing the public sort of an update about, here's where we are. And I think there is some value in that.
And I agree. I just think that I don't want it to be confused that the current resolution that's on the agenda, there are some things in that resolution that, like you stated, should be modified. And I don't know if it would be the best way in moving forward. I guess I was thinking, we either approve or deny the current, and then we state, okay, yes, we want a resolution, but we come back with a completely different resolution with what we want with a completely different resolution number. That's what I'm thinking. Because now it sounds confusing that we are intertwining what we want with what we have into the same resolution number.
That's certainly a cleaner way to do it, I believe.
That's what I'm asking, if we.
So Commissioner Edwards is wanting to redraw his motion?
With a statement.
With a statement. Do y'all want to make y'all's statement before he withdraws his motion? Okay. Commissioner Long?
I'm kind of piggybacking off of Commissioner Mason's statements. First of all, I'm not understanding why we even need this resolution. We have taxpayers that vote for these SPOSS programs. We have a fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers to do what we said we were going to do in the SPOSS. We don't need a resolution. This is stupid. I don't think we even need this. We're going to do the projects that we're supposed to do. We don't need a resolution to tell us to spend taxpayers' money when we already have the SPOSS program that is part of that. We're getting it done. We just need to make sure that management takes care of it and gets it done in a timely manner. That would be, to me, a management issue, not a resolution, is the way I'm feeling about it. I think it's ridiculous to do a resolution to spend taxpayers' money when you already have the taxpayers agreeing to the SPOSS programs.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson, then Commissioner Lindsay.
Thank you, Mr. Steve. I guess we might have a more question. Does the revolution, the new revolution, are going to stop those projects at Nelson Heights? And, let me get through. Because I want to be clear to the constituents that I represent in the district as well as, or at large, constituents that I also represent at large in Newton County, to make sure that we haven't forgot those projects, that they're going to be done, those projects. And it's not going to be a little slash, almost delete, and then you come back and say, well, whatever. Well, you know, y'all changed it up there, and they all didn't do that. Because, you know, and so I want to be sure that those two projects, along with the rest one, the rest of them, that they're going to be done. Because at the end of the day, I want to come back and say, well, we didn't have enough money to do it, and they got left out. And it has been like that before. Not necessarily that the people on this board, other boards have did that too as well. And I just want to be sure. So I guess the question is to Patrick, county attorney, is that we're going to complete these projects that I have mentioned and talked about along with the others as well?
So I'll try to answer that question. All of the projects listed on the SPOSS ballot are obligated to be completed. So the board can't just vote not to do. Well, you can. There is a procedure you can go through to declare a project infeasible. I don't think we're declaring any project infeasible. What might make sense, and I'll throw this out for consideration, perhaps rather than stressing over the language of a resolution, maybe you can give instruction at an upcoming meeting to have a comprehensive SPOSS review and go through the SPOSS list, project by project, inform both the board and the public of what the status of each project is, what's next steps. That might be a more efficient use of the board's time than stressing the details of a resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Lindsay?
I agree with Leanne. I agree with Demond, excuse me, Commissioner Long, Commissioner Mason. And I also agree with Commissioner Edwards. I think that the problem that we have is, and the word that I wrote down as Commissioner Edwards was talking is fortified. I think the problem that we have, especially in District 3, is that we have projects that have been pending for, in a lot of people's opinion, an unreasonable time period. And I think that the gentleman that came up that passionately talked about the 45 years that he had in District 3 and how he felt like by this being stale, we're not doing anything about it. Because we can sit here all day long and talk about what we're doing, but the public doesn't see anything. Unless something is rising up or spreading out, they don't see anything. I think that what Commissioner Edwards is saying is that, let's look at the spirit of the resolution. The spirit of the resolution is basically, look, we acknowledge that these projects are out here. And we're also acknowledging that we have an obligation to complete the projects by law. But we're also letting the public know that despite what has happened over the past whatever number of years, we are going to work diligently together to make sure that these projects are moved forward in a timely fashion. And I think that that's the spirit that Commissioner Edwards is trying to relay. And while I understand the technical side of getting rid of, or addressing the resolution here, I will have to say I agree with Commissioner Edwards because we need to show the public that we are dedicated. They already know that we got the funds to pay for the project because the funds have already been collected. But we need to show the public. But we need to show the public that we together are dedicated to move these projects forward. I don't think that the words "by any means necessary" need to be put in there, but I think that we need to have the spirit of "by any means necessary" in there, especially for the District Three projects. That, y'all, I'm just going to put it out there, it's unreasonable. It's unreasonable that these projects are still out here for District Three. It's unreasonable. And so I, 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 I thank Commissioner Edwards for looking at what we have in place and trying to embrace us collectively together. Because I think that that sends a more solid message to our public that we are going to be working together, because in the past, that has not been the presentation that we, we've been wanting.
Commissioner Long?
I'm just going to get real with y'all. I'm so tired of hearing about this dang park, I can't stand it. Let's figure out a way to get it going immediately. I don't care if it's a work session, I don't care if we're all running around looking for land, or whatever the holdup is. We need to get this thing going. I'm so tired of hearing about this park. I, I'm sick of it. It's been two years almost talking about this park. And I know there's been a lot of things that went on with this park, and why we don't have it with the land and all that. But we've got to move this along and, and get it going. It's, we can't just sit here and no resolution or anything, or saying we're going to do it. Just let's do it. What do we got to do to do it? Let's do it. That's where I am with it. I'm so tired of hearing about it.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Mason? Okay. Commissioner, uh, okay, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with, you know, if we want, if this board elects to have a resolution to show the spirit of making sure that we get these projects done, I'm definitely okay with that. I think what I don't want to do is, I don't want to intertwine what we, the resolution that we want with the resolution that we currently have before us. I think that's what I'm trying to ensure, that we're not mixing those two resolutions together. I think we should vote on the current resolution that's before us, as it is written. And then if we decide that we want to establish or create a resolution with the spirit of what the board wants, we create a completely separate, different resolution with a completely separate, different resolution number, and then allow that to come back before the board. And we can either approve or deny it at that time based off of how it's written. So I think that's, I'm not, I don't want to make it seem like I don't want the spirit of the resolution, if that's what we want. I'm okay with that. I just don't want to mix the two together. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So I didn't, I, I, I promise you, I did not mean to make this a filibuster for the, I, I thought this would be rather easy if we went districts one through five. I, I understand that the mandate to this board for that splosh came from the voters on that, that, that day at the ballot. And like the county attorney said, no matter what, no matter how resol- number nine, the resolution reads, it's not going to determine whether these projects get done or not. The projects are going to get done. What this does, I thought, was say, I, because I did not agree with this, the spirit of the original resolution, just one district. We have projects in all five districts. So I wanted to expand that to, to read all five districts. And that way it sends a, the, the public can see a, some, a, that the board has not forgotten. And, and we are, you know, we, we, we don't want you to lose confidence in this. We're, we're working on this. In fact, we got the emails this week with the, the, the big drawings, and, and we're, we're moving this forward. But I wanted the public to know that your, your splosh vote was not wasted, for one thing. And then it, it, now, if we want to proceed with me withdrawing this resolution and it reverting, reverting back to the original, and we're voting that down and coming back next meeting with another resolution that includes all five, with language we can all live with, then that's fine. I would just like to get this done as a, as a symbolic gesture for us moving forward. Hey, we haven't forgotten about these projects. We are moving forward. That, it, it was that simple. With that, I withdraw my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I'm actually for another, I might for another motion in just a second, but Ms. Cooper, I'm going to let you go first.
Yes, I'd like to recommend the second board meeting in February, we give a comprehensive update on all splosh projects. And then based on that discussion, we can have substantive work sessions needed for those particular splosh projects that we deem are maybe stagnant, are not moving swiftly enough.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. So what we're going to do, we either going to vote number nine up or down, and then we're going to come back with a resolution next week, next board meeting that include all the projects. Is there a second? Can you, can you cut your mic on, please? Yeah.
Can I make a motion to deny this resolution? I make a motion to deny Resolution R. 120324.
Is there a second? It's been motion, it's been motion by Commissioner Long, and second by Commissioner Henderson. Discussion, Commissioner Henderson.
Commissioner Long, she would explain to us the reason why she wanted it denied.
Okay, I'll be very quick. The reason why I don't think we need any resolution whatsoever to spend the money that has already been allocated to spend. I do think we need to get off our butts and get these projects done.
Any, any, any more discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Stand, deny it. Wow, five oh. Uh, next is consent agenda. I seek a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank, thank you, Patrick. I want to take the item down for those apartments. No, not consent agenda, you just, oh, okay. Consent agenda, you just take it off and then vote on it. Thank you.
Will be the board appointments?
The board appointments.
It'll be, they'll be on regular agenda.
Could, Commissioner Henderson want to remove the board appointments? Okay. We're going to make that item.
No, Patrick said we don't.
No, I mean, your ordinance allows anybody to remove one.
Eleven A. We're going to make that eleven A. What, what number? With that being said, I seek a motion that we approve the consent agenda, please. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason, and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Next is new business, number eleven.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have is item number eleven, presented by Ms. Catherine Ryder, Chief Judge Candace Branch for juvenile, requesting permission to accept the award in the amount of four hundred and four thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars awarded by the fiscal year twenty-five Bren State Crisis Intervention Program through the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Mr. Chairman, this is a, a grant that is very beneficial for Judge Branch and the work that she does in terms of juvenile prevention and crime. It's a standard grant. And also, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council is really the arm for juvenile justice at the state level, as well as local government municipalities in particular, in reference to the judges. So this is a grant that will cost us an additional ten thousand dollars, but it's a grant that's well-spent, I think. And it benefits, you know, recidivism rates, and it also decreases crime when it comes to juveniles.
Thank you, sir. Can I seek a motion, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason, and second by Commissioner Lindt. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Long?
So this, so this ten thousand dollars is not budgeted item? Is what we're saying, it's not budgeted?
No, it's not, no.
So is there, well, we see any kind of accountability to where, where this four hundred and four thousand dollars goes?
We can ask for quarterly reports, and we, and Judge Branch is typically good about providing data that's relevant to the impact of said grants.
And Commissioner, it's actually a reimbursement grant, which means as the juvenile court spends money on the qualified program, they will submit the expenditures to the grant program.
That's it, that's it. I just want to make sure there's some accountability.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh, thank you. Next is eleven A, board, I'm sorry, board appointments. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Uh, the reason, the reason why I want that particular item to be brought back before the board, because I think it's very important, this juncture in, in the Board of Commissioners, to our public, to our constituents, the ones that may want to know, or may want to know, or not to know, is to be transparent. And the reason why I requested that was because I, I felt that we had asked a similar question with the interim county manager, Lenis Sims. And Patrick, he brought to our attention, said, well, then, what you could do, you could, you could always, and what it was about was about reimbursement. And he said, just go ahead and see if, when the chairman come back, see if we could give him the reimbursement, or we could pay for, or lawyer fees, or pay for it now. And I think the consensus of the board, I think, was five oh, I'm not sure exactly what the vote was. Was to wait until he come back, and then we'll figure that out once he get back. And this is similar to that, because at this point, we are, we are, we are figuring out if, if we're going to have, be two less board members, possibly by the end of this month. And I think we need to just table this until a decision is made either by the governor, or whomever, and how we should move forward with that. And having said that, you know, since this has been brought out, do you have an opinion on this, Patrick, County Attorney?
Well, the decision as to whether and who you appoint is really a political decision for this board to make. The law with respect to the Solid Waste Management Authority requires that the chairman of the Board of Commissioners serves on the Solid Waste Authority. And it also requires that two additional elected officials serve on, on the authority. So the three appointments you see must come from, from this board. It, it's my belief that each of you serves in the role that you've been elected to, until you don't serve in the role you've been elected to. We don't know with or when the governor will act. I, I think it's, you know, I, I can tell you that the Solid Waste Authority right now is able to achieve an agenda as long as everybody shows up for meetings. You know, they, they, they have to have a quorum as well. I would recommend that you make appointments to the Solid Waste Authority. Who you appoint ultimately is a political decision for this board to make. But I, I also think that each commissioner, once selected, is entitled to serve until he or she is removed by whatever means. And at this point, nobody's been removed from office. If there is, if action is taken, this board will remain free, just like we did before, to reappoint new members to replace. So that's, that's how I view it. But who, who you ultimately appoint is entirely up to you.
Okay, I had another question to answer that. About a part of December, Buddy Morgan called me at home, and he told me that he was stepping down. And he said, he was telling me that the, it was his understanding that there was Commissioner Cowan District when he first started. Said, but after the, the district changed, he said that it would end up in District Four. And so what I was, the question that I'm asking is, is, is all the districts, or have all the districts been represented on this Solid Waste Authority? And has it been any of the, or research as far as trying to find who, who should be, who should be serving or not serving on that particular board?
Uh, so the Solid Waste Authority appointments are not made by district. There, there's no provision in either the law or the bylaws to specify what district the appointments come from. I can tell you, I have, I have not looked at where all the district members reside. I, I don't have any idea. I'm happy to do that and give you a report. I just don't know where they all live.
Well, I would be kind of, I mean, I would look forward to that, that particular report. Because Sharon saw it, Lake Forest saw your wife. She was my apartment to that board, and when I tried to go back and research and look for it, there was no record of it. And several know that she was a parent. So the only thing what I'm saying is, is that we need to be more transparent to, uh, the Commissioners and how they were set up, and then ultimately, who serves on those board, and not only that board, the Solid Waste Authority Board, but any board. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there a motion, please?
Motion to approve the board, board appointees, appointees as stated on the item eleven A.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards, and second by Commissioner Long. Any discussion? All in favor? Any oppose? It passes four one. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have listed is item number twelve. It's a discussion of Chapter thirty-eight of the Newton County Ordinance governing parks and recreation. Um, it's on page sixty-nine of the packet.
I think this is Commissioner Lindt?
Yes.
Yes.
This is an item that I requested to be placed on the agenda, just to be proactive about the, I hate to bring it up because I'm, LeAnn is so tired of it, the District Three park that is going to be coming, okay? The, in looking over the issues that were pending at Fairview Park, there were several things that I presented a couple of years ago that I thought would be beneficial to not only the Fairview Community Park, but also to the parks throughout the county. And so when I looked at the ordinances that we had, I saw that there were some things that were lacking, and some things that were confusing. And I wanted to make sure that we shored up our ordinances for park and recreation as we move forward to implement this new park. Now, would it be, would it be proper for me to ask our county manager to kind of give us an update on what has happened in Fairview Community Park? Is that okay to do? Okay. I would ask our county manager to give us an update on the improvements that have been made at Fairview Community Park to address the safety.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to yield to our Parks and Rec Director and Assistant Director, Mr. Dewayne Mast and Mr. Kale Curtis, and they're going to provide those updates.
Good evening, sir.
Hey, good evening, Chairman. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cooper. Good evening, Commissioners. So kind of y'all's discussed tonight some issues and things of, sometimes things are slower getting done than they should be, and this is one of those things. That part of it's our fault, part of it's things that we can't control. But for an update, I think you had called to the Sheriff's Department. We've had some issues, I understand lately with some ATVs. And so Tommy had talked with Kale, and they asked us to post signs. Those were posted today. So those are up. I've been working with Brent with Snapping Shoals. We're going to replace the ten-foot light poles that are around the track with twenty-foot light poles. He, he gave me an estimated time of three or four weeks to get that done. Kale has been working with Brandon, with the Sheriff's Department, looking at ways to do cameras. Brandon has been working with Snapping Shoals to get power run, get some poles set. We didn't get an update this week, but last week, the update Kale got was Snapping Shoals has agreed to run the power, set the poles, and that would give us either two or four cameras that will cover the whole park. And that should be within the next four weeks. And that would at least drive- And that would at least address the light situation, cameras. Originally though, originally, we had cameras in this loss for all of our parks, but the money didn't quite go that far. So, hopefully within the next four to six weeks, those issues will be taken care of and fixed.
And, and so to piggyback off of what you have presented, those are great measures, the signage is great, the problem that I had was that there was a disconnect between the ordinances and the signs. Number one, when you have an ATV, and I talked to the Sheriff's Department, and they were able to provide this information for me, we confirmed that one of the, I think the Homeowners Association President had stated that there were ATVs that were being used in the park, and that when law enforcement was called, law enforcement really couldn't do anything because there was nothing that prohibited ATVs from being used in the park. And so, when you look at our ordinances, our ordinance doesn't say that it shall be unlawful to use certain vehicles in the park. And so, I think that from the standpoint of addressing our ordinances, that definitely needs to be something that we import, I mean, incorporate in there. Another thing was, the use of the park or being in the park during hours that are not in operation, that's lacking in our ordinance as well. I think that when you have individuals that go into these parks, or when they're not supposed to, the police doesn't have the meat to do anything, because there's nothing in the ordinance that says this is unlawful, and because it's unlawful, these are the penalties that we have. I also think that notification is important, so if we have these ordinances updated to include those things that are unlawful, like for instance, they have, they had a fire in, in Fairview Community Park. Our ordinance says only use fire in certain places, but it doesn't say that it is unlawful to use fire in these non-designated areas. And that's important, because when you have it say unlawful, what that means is that if the person does it, then they are, they're subjected to the penalties that are in the ordinance. And so, our ordinance, while it touches on what the penalties are, the penalties need to be a little stiffer, and the reason I say that is because, you know, District Two has had issues with the park, people being in the park, guns being discharged in the park, that needs to be an ordinance that says it's unlawful. I know it, it shouldn't be, but unless it's in writing, and the people have notice of it, they can do it and, and be okay, you know, and it's fine. And I think that the penalty needs to be stiffer, because right now, I think it's a five hundred dollar penalty, it needs to be a thousand dollars. And so, it gives the Sheriff's Department meat, so that if somebody is doing something, then they can go ahead and either arrest them, depending on what they're doing, or they can at least issue a citation. And if they issue a citation, and you have a thousand dollar fine, and you are posted on the signs that you're talking about, that these things are unlawful, or, or reference to the, to the code that says where it's unlawful, you've given the individual notice that it's unlawful to do it, and if they come and do it, then we, they know that they're gonna be subjected to some kind of penalty. And so, I'm just asking for us to increase, well, not increase, but do an assessment of these ordinances, shore up our ordinances, so that we can go ahead and help the Sheriff's Department, you know, enforce these rules, as well as have some kind of penalty for these individuals that are violating these rules. I mean, I am, I'm excited about what's gonna happen in District Three, we're gonna get a park, but I want to make sure the park is safe, and I'm, and I'm being funny, because I'm using, I'm gonna use the park at least five times, because it bothers Liam, but we're gonna get a park, but I want the park to be safe. I want the park to be able to have individuals that can come in that park, then they're supposed to be in that park, and they have the county who has put in place measures to make sure that if somebody's in that park that shouldn't be, or they're doing something that they're not supposed to be, that they're gonna be punished for it. And so, we need that. And I've done comparisons with the Gwinnett County ordinances and the Rockdale County ordinances, and I'll be happy to, I mean, I don't have to do it, we got an attorney that can do that, but I just want to make sure that those things that are in those ordinances that we're lacking, there's to be a comparison, and we can incorporate those things in.
And I appreciate that, that helps us tremendously.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Oh, first of all, Dwayne, I just, I thank you personally for all the work that you've done for recreation during the years, you know, and I, I served under Recreation Commission for about twenty-three years, and I'm telling you, you were the man that started almost at the back of the line, and is at the front of the line for running Recreation in Newton County. And I think the, the ideas that Commissioner Lindt, I was talking about, is great, and it need to be ordered for the whole entire county. Also, we need signage, signage from dusk to dawn, at every park here in Newton County. Everyone, to make sure that they know, and that too would give the officers, sheriff, city council police, police officers, their right to say, you're not there at a certain time, you need, you need to leave. We also need motion detectors and tag, and tag readers. And the reason why I say, because even time they may shoot in the park somewhere, you wouldn't know where they at unless you had, unless you had a tag reader or a motion detector, tag reader, read the tags, who was out there, and a motion detector, but would help, all the parks, would to have a sign to say you've been there from dusk to dawn, and once they don't leave by the time it start getting night, then the police officer comes in and asks them to leave. Thank you.
And we, and we can check all of our parks and see which ones don't. A lot of them do have it, some of them probably don't.
One, one quick question. Who would be monitoring the cameras?
They will go with the Sheriff's Department's setup they have now.
Okay.
So, we went over there, we visited that back in October, and so everything would be able to run through them. We would also have access to see them, but, but they would be monitored.
Okay, alright.
And then I have another question, and I don't know, maybe you could answer this question. So, the cameras, in my understanding, are gonna be very high-tech cameras, it's gonna be cameras you could see it all.
That's correct.
And so, with flock cameras out there, and these high-tech cameras, you'll be able to also see license plates with people that are in the park when they shouldn't be in the park. The question I have is that when you have, they, they have these civil ordinances that allow for, there to be civil penalties, if somebody's caught on a camera in an area that they're not supposed to be, or they are speeding, you can charge a fee for the violation. Is, is that something that we can implement here, or can we go and just use the information from the camera to go ahead and, you know, pursue ordinance violation or citation against the individual?
Yes, so unfortunately, absent specific, specific statutory authorization to impose those types of civil penalties, we probably cannot. But we can make, that can be considered as evidence in a co-violation.
Okay.
So, just so you know, Commissioner, and the rest of the board knows, when this, when this made it to the agenda, I went ahead and began a, had someone begin sort of revising this to address those, there's a couple of new issues you've mentioned, we're gonna put those in there. We can have something available for the board's review by probably the second meeting in February. We can either put it on the agenda as a, as a further discussion item, or put it on the agenda for adoption.
Okay, great.
However you would prefer to do it, and, and try to address those. I would urge all of you, if you have other issues, and you as well please, being in the park all day, every day, let me know what those are, and we can, we can try to plug those in in a way that makes sense.
Can I say one thing?
Yep.
That's what you call moving on an issue. If you can get that to us in this short period of time, so we've got the lights, we've got the camera, and we got the ordinances that can all be done in likely thirty days.
Yes.
And the community can be safe.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Flock cameras are already throughout the county.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have is item number thirteen. Our county attorney, Mr. Patrick Jogstetter, is going to discuss and address the coroner, the new coroner's salary.
So, good evening. As, as all of you know, a new coroner was elected, took office on January first, Coroner Griggs. She has contacted the county about her salary. I don't mind telling you that it was a little bit difficult to figure out what the, what the underlying legal basis and legal justification for the coroner's salary in Newton County was. But I can report to you that in two thousand nineteen, there was a local act of the General Assembly, it was called House Bill six nineteen, that provided for an annual salary of the Newton County coroner to be one thousand dollars per year. That law also authorizes this Board of Commissioners to grant a supplement to that minimum salary at such amount as this board feels is appropriate. Once you grant the supplement to the coroner, you can't reduce it during, during the coroner's term of office. Georgia law also provides for a minimum salary scheme, for lack of a better word, for, for coroners. It's basically a, a per-call fee that a coroner can charge. And that charge is a one hundred and seventy-five dollar investigation fee, where there is no coroner's jury impaneled. There aren't often coroner's juries impaneled, but it is a procedure a coroner can do. If a jury is impaneled, that fee is two hundred and fifty dollars per death investigation. There have been a couple of efforts at the state level to uniform salaries for coroners across the state, to establish minimum salaries for coroners, like they do with a lot of other elected officials. That has not made it past, you know, introduction law. So, if the most recent version of that, which was introduced, I think, last year, if that had gone into effect based on the population numbers, the minimum salary in Newton County would have been fifty-five thousand dollars a year. That law did not go to an effect. So, the, the law in effect today is that the coroner is entitled, as a matter of law, to receive at least one thousand dollars a year. Because that is below the state minimum of a hundred and seventy-five dollars per investigation, or two fifty per investigation, the coroner could elect to receive the per-investigation fee. If the coroner were to, well, based on numbers just this year thus far, the coroner has investigated, I believe, two hu, twenty-six deaths thus far this year. Assuming those do not have juries impaneled, that's a hundred and seventy-five dollars per death, I did the math a little earlier. That would rough out to about forty-six thousand dollars a year. I understand the coroner has made a request, how much was the request?
Fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five thousand? So, it's up to this board. I, I, I would suggest that a, a number less than forty-six thousand dollars would, would probably, if I were the coroner, I would say I'd rather get paid on a per-death basis. The coroner's job is a lot more than it used to be. The time was that the, the coroner didn't do as much as the coroners do today. Your population has grown, there are more and more calls, it's been over one per day so far this year. And the, the administrative work, and the, there is liability associated with it, there's a lot that goes, and it's an important job. So, I would recommend that you consider a salary supplement in excess of the thousand dollars for the coroner. I would recommend that you make it at least what the average would be of that forty-six thousand dollars. For, I don't know how much of her professional time the coroner will spend, but it can be a significant job, and it's a very important job for the county. So, what, what that ultimate number is, is entirely up to you, but I do think it is appropriate for this board to establish a minimum salary for the coroner.
Commissioner Long?
What did our former coroner make?
He was making forty thousand a year, I believe it was, I believe toward the end it was increased to like forty-four thousand.
How many years was he coroner?
It was forty thousand, and he'd been coroner forever, and I think he would be the first to tell you that it, it got to where it was not enough, even with his other employment.
Do we, I mean, I mean, I, I understand, because trust me, after this week I've had, I'd like to make a hundred thousand dollars doing this job. But, but I'll tell you what, I mean, what did, what do we have budgeted for this coroner position in our budget? Do we, do we know?
We're getting ready for, for budget, but typically, the budget has been traditionally around sixty-five thousand dollars or so.
So, we have that in it, but nobody's been taking that? Because that Mr. Davis didn't take whatever that salary was?
It was kind of like his operating budget as well.
Oh, okay, okay, I understand, okay, that's why I was asking the salary.
The salary, no, that wasn't his salary.
Okay. I know I'm hitting you with something that you probably don't know right off the bat, but that's fine. I don't know, I mean, I think we should come up with a minimum starting number, and that increases like a commissioner's job or anybody else's job. You know what you're giving to run.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I did some research, Henry County's has a full-time coroner, and they're about, that, that coroner's around a hundred and ten dollars per call, six hundred calls, cases last year, sixty-five thousand dollars for the year. Walton County is a, a part-time, about a hundred and, right around a hundred and three dollars per call, four hundred calls last year. And Newton County had three hundred cases, it looks like annually around three hundred cases, and that, and our coroner, you said, was forty, is that correct? So, that would be a hundred and thirty-three or so dollars per call. So, our coroner is already more, being paid more per case than a couple of the counties next to us. I don't have a problem increasing that pay, but I, I think it ought to be a, an annual look for us. Is that possible, Mr. County?
So, you can establish the salary tonight, you can't, you cannot reduce it during her term. So, the, the, say you chose X to be the salary, and, and the workload decreases, you can't reduce it. If you establish X, and it's determined that that's insufficient, you could adjust it next year. Or even during the year, you could adjust it upward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lindt?
The one seventy-five rate that you referred to, you said a one seventy-five and a two fifty.
Right.
The one seventy-five and the two fifty, the one seventy-five is in the event that there's not a jury impaneled for the purpose of handling death cases?
That's correct.
Okay, what's the two fifty for?
That is if there is a jury impaneled.
So, you get more if the jury's impaneled?
That's right. Because that's a significant more work for the, for the coroner as well.
Okay, because you're doing criminal investigations and that, okay. So, as it relates to that number, is that number something that's statutorily done from the state level, or is that something that we locally did?
Yes, that's statutorily by the state.
Okay, and so, Commissioner Edwards mentioned that the two counties around us have a lower number per call, is that because they did a local legislation to get that?
No, so those coroners are on salary.
Okay.
They're on an annual salary basis, and what he did was looked at what the average numbers were.
I got you.
So, when, once you, once you, once the coroner is taken out of the per-call number and, and salaried, then that number may be more or less than the one seventy-five.
Okay. And so, the number, you used to be in Henry County, the number's sixty thousand, or you don't remember?
I couldn't tell you, it's, I, I don't remember the salary. I can tell you what I know coroners do. They get called in the middle of the night, they have to go to accident scenes, they have to go to the hospital. You know, the, the on-call nature of a coroner, the, to think that, you know, forty thousand dollars to me is not a whole lot of money for someone doing what the coroner is called upon to do. You know, the... Right, and, and the, and I would, right, and, and the qualifying fee was based on the forty thousand dollars. So, you, you base it on the, the prior person's salary. So, I mean, it is a, I, I do think some number between the forty thousand that the prior coroner was making, and the fifty-five thousand dollars that has been requested, makes sense to me. You know, it, it, it is an important job, it's one of those jobs that touches people at their worst time, and you want someone in that job who wants to be there.
All right, and so my question then is, the, like Commissioner Long said, in this particular case, was the coroner advised of what the salary was during the time in which, I mean, before she took office?
I don't know. I certainly did not have, I, I typically don't give advice to anybody running for office, but when, when the coroner paid a qualifying fee, just like each of you paid a qualifying fee, it was based on the forty thousand dollars salary, so.
And so, tonight, all we're doing is setting a salary, so we would be setting a salary based upon the, the salary that's in place right now, the one thousand, and actually setting a salary for the supplement?
Right. I would recommend that you just set an amount, and, and that be, that total amount be the total salary.
I'm ready to make a motion. You had a question? I'm sorry.
Commissioner, Commissioner, Commissioner Henderson, I'm sorry.
Patrick, does that include her help? Because I think from a few times that we had, had other coroners, one of the things that came into play was maybe an accident on the side of the road, and whereas he or she didn't have any help, and they'd rely on the, maybe a sheriff deputy or EMS or whatever to come out and help. So, what did it come as, her having some help, or him having some help, I think it's her in this case, having some help.
I don't think the county has budgeted for any assistant to the coroner. I think the coroner is a... I think the coroner is a, is a solo position at this point. If the coroner, if the county elected to fund additional positions, it could. Is there a deputy? Is there currently a deputy? I just don't know.
Well, there was a deputy with Tommy.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Yes, it was. And I don't mind telling you, I don't know how the deputy is paid or what that salary arrangement is. There is a statutory provision for a per-call fee to a deputy.
Typically, that's a part-time designation as well.
If I may continue just briefly, that was part of the problem. You know, we sometimes rough office and we may not know all the specifics on it like myself did years ago. That's why I don't have a hair on my head. And she's come, I mean, she's come into a job where it's going to be kind of very difficult because I heard there's some three-hundred-pound peoples and stuff and sometimes she may or may not have any help. So I think you need to have the option, help for her, you know, as long as she willing to do the job. Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So the conversation about the deputy coroner was, was those, was that money for that position paid from the coroner's budget or was that the coroner's, did the coroner forego that money and somehow it was paid?
No, just as a basic practical operational matter, it would be paid separately through the budget. The coroner would make a salary and the deputy would get paid the per-call fee.
So it had to have been paid from his budget?
Yeah.
The deputy coroner had to have been paid from his budget?
From the coroner budget, but not from the coroner's salary.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Get rid of your motion.
Yes, I'm about to say, you're on, I apologize. I'd make a motion that we set the coroner's salary for the term of her, term of her office at fifty-one thousand dollars per year.
Fifty-one. Is there a second? Okay, it's been motioned.
Fifty-one thousand.
Fifty-one thousand. It's been motioned by Commissioner Lindsay and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It passes four-one. Thank you. Next, we have alcohol license. We don't have any. Next, the citizens' comments. At this time, will our citizens make comments? You may come at this time, please state your name, your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so.
Maya Allen, District Three, actually a resident in Fairview Estates where there's park that needs work. We've been up here plenty of times talking about this park and cameras, ten-foot light posts. There was also a plan to actually cut off access to the park from our subdivision. That's what's going to solve the problem. We also need a gate just like they have at Spring Hill Park that is automatic. There's a manual gate there now that kids use for a seesaw. There's also signage out there that I think you, Commissioner Lindsay, had updated from dusk till dawn. Doesn't matter. This is also a right-to-carry state, so sheriff has been called when we see things and because it's a right-to-carry state, there's not a lot they can do. So I don't know what all that extra stuff and signage is going to do based on that law, but I think the meeting that you're going to have with rec, MIHOA, which they haven't discussed with any residents, make sure I'm there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Greetings, esteemed board. How are you? Elena Sanders. Excuse my absence, I would have been here earlier to give you some backstory. I received a lot of text messages while I was at the House Bill eighty-one, five-eighty-one hearing in regards to the resolution. So in last year, on last year, I met with Chairman Lanier Sims, who was the one told me about the resolution. He did a resolution in 2018, the same resolution you guys just voted for today. He did it in 2018. He was the one who said, you need to protect your projects. I'm going to show you how to do a resolution. That resolution was passed in 2018, the exact same resolution. What you guys saw tonight was a modified resolution that was modified by the county attorney. The original resolution was created by the residents of District Three who wanted to include those things in there to protect the projects, just like Commissioner Lanier Sims did in 2018. That's why that resolution came about, because he was the one who said he was trying to protect his projects before he exited out of the building. So he wanted to make sure those things were done that the people voted for, that they were put in place. So that's why that resolution was done, because it was an idea that was given to me from a former commissioner who sat in his seat. Thank you so much for that. So in regards to House Bill five-eighty-one, I have not heard anything from this board when we're going to have those hearings. We just had a hearing with the school board. Are you all aware of the bill that just dropped today from the Senate? Because so many school boards and counties and governments are thinking about opting out, they're putting legislation in place because the governments, the local governments are not listening to the people to take that power away. It already dropped today. So we have not heard anything in regards to House Bill five-eighty-one. Giving you some numbers, Newton County received forty-three million dollars last fiscal year from property taxes. That's not including all the other things we get in, but from property taxes from residents, we received forty-three million dollars. So my question to every district from one to five, because it has to be a consensus of the board in order to opt out, I would love to know from each commissioner, what is your stance on House Bill five-eighty-one? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Dave Norton, Newborn. I am one that is talked about in discussions, not because of my Facebook page. They talk about me in House Bill five-eighty-one when you mention seniors that are on a fixed income. My social security check is over half my income. I attended the Board of Education meeting tonight and I seen charts showed one potential loss, not how much the increase would be at a two or three percent inflation rise. I would like to see more than just one option. That's a worst-case scenario. I'd see more than that, need to. I would also like to see, in our public hearings, I would like to see charts showing our pilot payments from our JDA. How much of those pilot payments are going to the Board of Education? How much are going here? I would like to see a pass breakdown of those. I would also like to see a future potential income in, from the increase, the pilot payments are planned to increase in the next few years. And I would like that to include, if Rivian is making cars by twenty-eight or twenty-nine, how much more will we be getting and how much and what, if any, benefit to citizens' tax relief our JDA work is bringing us? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Dennis Taylor, District One and District Five, Land in District Three. My comments on House Bill five-eighty-one too, but kind of a different way. It was a real good work session. Everybody came in clear, had their mics on. I had to watch them from the house sometimes because I got bad sugar problems, so I had to kind of monitor. But we finally came together, undivided. House Bill five-eighty-one passed by a landslide in every district, every precinct in Newton And I don't think it passed it before it be opted out of. I wish y'all just wouldn't hold these meetings and let it go. But there's two important things that I like to bring up. People understand the necessity of millage rates increases. We had them for ten straight years and no commissioner was voted out. Anybody chose to run again, we're reelected. So they understand if you had to make a millage rate change. And the concept that maybe we can't get through hard time, the past board, many of y'all were on it, managed us through COVID. Nothing had to be shut down. Everything kept running. Safety departments kept running way back in two-oh-seven, two-oh-eight. That board got us through that big downturn, huge downturn. Kathy Morgan managed the county. The commissioners, Commissioner Henderson was on that board and they managed it through it with the help of them, letting the managers do their managing and a genius manager Gerald Mynne as county executive assistant and then county manager, Mr. John Middleton, got us through it. So don't never doubt what you can do in crises. I was a manager for thirty years. I welcomed what they would throw on me. It's real important to let this go. It was voted in by the people. We don't get a chance very often. This is a once-in-a-lifetime chance to get something done on assessments. The budget was forty-five, forty-six million in 2012. It's now about a hundred million. So revenue has come into this county and will continue to come into this county. It's a growing county. Y'all can manage through by letting this, let it slide on through.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
James Peterson, District Number Two. Dealing with House Bill five-eighty-one, it's like owning a timeshare. The people said with sixty percent of Newton County saying, we're tired of giving the timeshare company a blank check every year. We want to put limits on it. For example, you just got through passing ten thousand dollars for juvenile basis that wasn't budgeted in. Is that only going to go for Newton County's citizens? Or is it going to go for Rockdale County citizens? That get in trouble in Newton County? Are we going to get reimbursed for those students? There's a saying that goes, you watch your pennies, the dollars will take care of themselves. This board has an image problem and you're feeding into a negative image problem. There's ongoing litigation against some board members, but yet you just got through approving those two board members to set on the waste management facility. And whenever I moved here, the biggest thing was the waste system not meeting EPA standards. Now we have two board members that were appointed onto this commission that, oh, questionable ethics has arose. Is something going on? Are they going to shut down the waste, of the waste management because of the flux of growth that's occurred in Newton County? District Three just got through getting approved by the vote of the chair for a hundred and ninety-seven new townhomes and y'all are feeding into negative perception of the board.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First, let me say, Ms. Cooper, please relay, I think you saw an email to your, the road staff, including, and I'm sure they pulled in more people than just the road staff through our, our two latest snow events in Newton County. I saw, I went to the operations center and saw firsthand the efficiency and the teamwork of the, the agencies of the cities and of the counties. So kudos to those through both events. So House Bill five-eighty-one has been a hot topic and I plan to put something on my Facebook page very soon about it. I'm leaning toward leaving us in, voting toward leaving us in. But it's important for people to know that when you voted, when I voted yes for this on the referendum side in November, I also voted for the ability of the governing entities to opt out. I voted for the ability to stay in as described by law, but I also voted for the ability, you also voted for the ability to opt out. That's not, and I believe we're going to hold three meetings and they're going to be called in the paper, opt-out meetings. That does not mean we're opting out. That means we're having three meetings. If we want to opt out, we can, but we have, if we want to opt out, those are three required meetings, but I don't know that we'll opt out. So I just wanted to make that clear. And one of the gentlemen, or Mr. Taylor hit on the millage rate. Now, what I believe five-eighty-one does is it, it takes away the guesswork on what your property value will do each year. It does do that and it limits it to the Consumer Price Index, which is a basket of goods each year, right? So it limits that to, I believe it's a, I can't swear to it, but I believe it's three percent. So our county budget is our county budget and we work to keep that as streamlined as possible, have been for years. At least every year I've been here, I know this board's worked together to try to do that. So your taxes start with that budget and you make that as streamlined as you can. Now, if your property values, if we, let's say a hundred million dollars, we need a hundred million dollars, now your property values do not increase enough with our current millage rate to, to, to grab that hundred million dollars, two years down the road, let's say. So then we have to increase that millage rate, which increases your taxes. There's a, there's a bad, and I don't think anybody here feels this way, but there's a, there's a perception out there when your, when your tax or your, your, your property value is frozen, that your taxes will never go up. Well, that's just simply not the case. They could go down, but they, more than likely, they're going up, right? We have, we have inflation. And I tell you what else is not tied to inflation is salaries and benefits for our county, which is seventy-five percent of our budget. So, you know, the, 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 the Consumer Price Index or inflation is not tied in whatsoever with, with those salaries. So it's not necessarily a relative correlation. It's, it's, there's a lot of things that go into it, but I think it's important we know, no matter what your home value is, we as commissioners have to adjust that multiplier, that millage rate, to bring in the amount of money we need. So if your home value goes down, we still got to probably go up on the millage rate to, to offset that decrease. I just want, I just want to clear some of that up and I'll be putting some of that on my Facebook page. I have to dumb it down for me because, you know, so I can understand it. So hopefully other people be able to understand it, even people smarter than me can probably explain it better than me, but I just wanted to put that out there. There's some conceptions that, that when your property value does not increase, your taxes won't either. That's not necessarily the case. Hopefully that's the case. Hopefully we can keep our budget to three percent or not, not increase it over three percent, but that's just not a reality a lot of times. So I wanted to put that out there. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason?
No comments.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lindsay?
Okay. HB five-eighty-one. I want to first start by saying that the reason that we're having the three meetings is so that we give the community an opportunity to learn about taxation in our county. That's one of the things that when I first got, right before getting on the board and I met, I said, we need to have an opportunity for people to understand fully what taxation means in our county because we're confused about it. We, some, some people think that the county has control over school board taxes and some people think that, you know, we can decrease the school board taxes. So it gives us an opportunity to talk about it. Now, I have been very clear on my vision for taxation in this community and I want to make sure, and if it is recorded so you can see it, so you can play it back, so you don't get it misunderstood. I believe that senior taxation needs to be reduced. I need, I think that that needs to be tax relief for seniors. I made that very clear. That's a passion that I have. That's something I'm going to go for. I also made it very clear in my literature as I was running my campaign and even after, when I got elected in whatever month it was, and I had the six months, I spent six months researching this, and I said that HB five-eighty-one is similar to- And I said that HB five eighty-one is similar to what we were talking about doing, or at least what I was talking about doing, when I said that we need to freeze the tax assessment. Because what is happening is tax assessment goes up, millage rate comes down, but the taxes still go up. So it's a smoke mirrors game and we want to get around that. So HB five eighty-one, I voted for it. HB five eighty-one, do we fully understand what HB five eighty-one was and what it entailed? No. Do we know that when we got in, we were going to be stuck in and we could not get out and we didn't have an opportunity to fluctuate things? No. I like what Mr. Taylor said when he said that, you know, we've been through crises before and we worked together as a board and because we worked together as a board, we were able to get through those crises. That's the only reason, the only reason I'm supporting HB five eighty-one. So I'm saying it for the record. I'm supporting HB five eighty-one. I think that that is something that we should do. I don't like the fact that we're going to be stuck in it. But in the spirit of what Mr. Taylor said, I believe that we can work together to figure out how we can maneuver through any issues that we may have going forward. So Commissioner Stephanie Lindsay of District Three has said, I support it. But you also have to take into consideration, I'm also supporting senior taxation. So if we get to a situation where we have a number of board members on our board that agree what we're going to do to address senior tax relief, guess what? It may be that that millage rate has to be adjusted because the seniors, which I've said for a long time, are the priority. We have forgotten about them. We have gone on deaf ears for years and that's over with. That's stopped. Now, with all that being said, and I've made it clear, let me move on to District Three. I want to make it clear that regardless of this resolution that was presented tonight, the projects in District Three are a priority for me. My board members know that it's been a priority for me. That's why Leanne said that she's tired of hearing about the park. And while I have jokingly said it earlier about a resolution that Commissioner Edwards had suggested, I meant what I said. By any means necessary, District Three will get the things that were promised to the community. And it's going to be bigger and better than anybody can imagine because we're going to work together to make it happen and we're motivated to make it happen. And we're not thinking about ourselves. We're thinking about what's best for the community. So I want to make sure that it's clear. Our, not mine, our District Three projects will be a priority and there's not a need for a resolution to prove that.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. First of all, HB five eighty-one, we talk so much about it. We had meetings here in this horseshoe with Texas's office and others, Mark was Jordan, who was the, but we had meetings here and it was packed and people wanted to know about the bill. So I'm sure that a lot of people knew exactly what was on the ballot. They know. And when they went out and voted for it, guess what? They voted for what they wanted for and how they want our county to be ran. I agree with Commissioner Stephanie Lindsay, I keep wanting to say attorney. I agree with Stephanie that we need to vote it in. I mean, in our seniors, you know, we have done the home repair and let us not mess this up too for our seniors. This county, this government is going to continue to grow and the bills will continue to be paid. So let's do it right by our citizens of Newton County. And one last thing. The least we can do is fix our parks in our districts. Y'all just forget about this thing about who I may like or who I may not like. Let's do it for the peoples who elected us. And once you're elected, you're not just a district commissioner, you are a large commissioner because we vote on stuff in District One throughout our districts. So it means something. We've got to have transparency and we got to have integrity. I mean, you know, when the shoe was on the other foot with me, I mean, everybody, hey, he did this or he did that. I didn't care. I kept working and working and working. And I'm pretty sure other people don't care. But the best thing is about your constituents and what we can do to make our delives better, especially our seniors and our childrens. Let's give our kids something to do. Let's make recreation free for every child in Newton County who wants to play sports in our county. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Long, sorry.
As long as you call me. First of all, this board is great and everybody works well together and everybody's happy, positive. I'm tired of the negativity. We're going to get that stuff done in District Three if I have to do it myself. We're going to get it done. Tired of hearing it. We're going to get it done. We're going to need all y'all's help to get it done and we want you to help us because you have, you have the knowledge, you have, you know what people want. And we want to, instead of being negative about, let's get positive. I'm a positive person. I'm all about, let's get it done, get it done, get it done, get it done. You'll find that out about me. And I'm going to say whatever I want to say because I am not running for reelection. I'm going to be on a beach. I've told y'all that. I'm going to make decisions on this board that helps Newton County, all of Newton County. And I'm going to do it no matter if it's District One, Two, Three, Four, Five. And I'm going to be tight with money. I'm going to be very tight. That's just my personality. I squeak, okay? The other thing is House Bill five eighty-one. We might not even be having those meetings because I am going to vote to stay in it. I feel like that I've been talking to other counties and all the other counties, I talked to Walton County. They've been doing the exact same program for almost twelve years and they ain't missed a bit. I think the problem is, it's a tax and spend problem, is what I think. And we just have to learn to live with what we get. If we only get three percent, then we learn to live with three percent. And I know that's tough, but homeowners do that. I'm doing that. I'm doing that right now. I mean, you can't even buy any groceries. I saw fifty dollars for two steaks at Publix. I was like, oh, my God. And this girl likes to eat a steak every night, okay? So we've got to buckle down and we've got to figure out, but we do have to play our employees. That is something that is really important to me and dear to my heart is to pay in these county employees and making sure they don't leave to go to other counties. So it's a balancing act. It's going to be very hard. It's going to be very hard for this board. And I agree with Commissioner Edwards, that millage rate is probably going to go up. You know, we've been playing smoke and mirrors with the millage rate. Oh, the millage is staying down or we're doing a rollback. And you're like, well, how in the heck does my bill get higher? That's because your property value goes up. Now your property value is going to be frozen and guess what? We're going to go up on the millage. But we need to make sure it makes sense and I'm going to make sure, I'm a numbers person and a spreadsheet person and we just have to look at every dime and make sure it's being spent right and being spent on these projects. You know, we don't need a resolution for these projects. That's stupid. We have got to get the projects done. We're getting them done. We just need to move a little faster.
Thank you, ma'am. Guys, I just want, I do want to say this tonight. I think we put a, when we start advertising for these meetings, I think we're putting a false perception out there that the board is inclined to opt out of this five eighty-one. If, you know, so there's not, you know, the community, all, the whole community don't come to the board meetings, you know? And so once they see those signs go up saying, hey, we're going to opt out, I think that's a false perception out there. And I think you're going to have people who actually voted for five eighty-one. They're going to be upset and they're going to come in upset thinking that we're about to opt out or something. So I want y'all to reconsider those meetings. I really don't think we need to have those meetings if we're going to opt out. I think we just, I mean, if we're going to stay in. I think we just need to stay in if we're going to stay in. That's just my two cents. But guys, listen, I'm going to try to have a great week. It's been a great meeting. Seek a motion that we adjourn. Who made it? Commissioner? Who seconded? Commissioner, thank you. It was motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner, all in favor? All in favor? Thank you. You stand adjourned.